I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Secretary to note, roll call. Board correspondent report, Pat.
Okay, on the federal side, the Department of Justice and the Civil Rights at the US Department of Education wanted every school district to remind themselves that you cannot discriminate kids based on their lack of immigration status or their lack of English skills. It cautions that school districts may not prohibit or discourage such children from enrolling in school and must offer them language assistance services and provide their parents with school-related information in a language they can understand. Why did I report on this is because we have all the Afghan refugees coming in. We've got people coming in all over the border. We don't know where they're going to be relocated, where the government's relocating, where they relocate themselves. You might think that you're a small district in northeastern Wisconsin. This might not impact you, but it very well could impact us. You know, you don't know. And I'm sure that the federal government is not going to give us any funds to help with all of this. But, you know, it's a possibility, okay? At the state level, there are a number of bills in the Assembly that are probably going to, if they pass, are going to be some more unfunded mandates. We don't like mandates. We certainly don't like unfunded ones. Anti-racism and anti-sexism, pupil instruction anti-racism and anti-sexism training for employees of school districts and independent charter schools. I find that one kind of interesting because it seems like nowadays everything is racist, so I would be interested in seeing the curriculum on that, whatever they've got planned for that one. Requiring school boards to make information about learning materials and educational activities used for pupil instruction available to the public. I'm thinking that one is driven by the CRT.
Right, but they don't specify that.
They don't specify.
So they're saying all curriculum, which would be a big burden.
But I'm thinking that's what's driving this one. Required instruction in civic education in the elementary and high school grades. All kinds of things here. Requires cursive writing in our academic standards. And specify each elementary school curriculum must include the objective that pupils be able to write legibly in cursive by the end of fifth grade. We've had that discussion before. How often do you write your name in cursive? Every time you use your charge card, you've got to write your name in cursive. So I think that's important, but we'll see where that one ends up. And then the, I think we talked about this one before. The DPI was supposed to create a portal so that the taxpayers can find out, look at all the information, financial information, so they can see where the money is going. This one, I'm not so sure on. I don't know if I would like this one or not. This one requires school boards to provide a human growth and development instructional program, which I do believe we do, to include in the program an explanation of the process under current law for a parent of a newborn to relinquish the custody. I'm not so sure that's the school's role.
I think what they're referring to is that there is a safe haven law.
Yes, there is a safe haven law.
That a lot of people aren't aware of. And so I think what they're trying to maybe.
Is make them aware.
Make them aware of it.
If I'm with that, if that's as far as it goes.
Yeah, because that's so that a newborn can be safely delivered to an emergency room.
Without any repercussions, yes.
Instead of, instead of abandoned, right?
Right.
So, yeah, so I think.
And there's another one. It's called for credit recovery courses. School boards are required to report to the DPI the number of pupils who take a credit recovery course and then what class they get in or what grade they get in. And that credit recovery class is just a program, it allows the pupil to retake a course that they previously had failed in if they need that credit for graduation. So to me, that sounds like a lot of, a lot of.
A lot of reporting.
A lot of reporting again.
Yeah.
Let's see, what else is in here?
When do we get to teach?
Well, we don't, we don't, we don't. Let's see. Oh, and there's another one about civic education. And it would be part of the social studies credits and must include one-half credit of civics instruction to graduate. There is also a bill out there by Representative Kitchens. Because Wisconsin's reading, our reading ranks have fallen. He is proposing a bill that would, oh boy, including a laundry list of stringent new state mandates relating to screening, assessments, interventions, parental notifications, the reporting requirements. And they're so specific that they even dictate what companies and products that we would have to use.
I think when that first came out, we said that we wanted to let him know that.
Many people.
Well, it's out there. It's one of the proposed bills. Not that, you know, not that these, any, they might not even get passed. And who knows what form they're going to get passed in. And then there's also one which might help out the district. They want to raise the legal possession, the legal age for sale of possessions and cigarettes, nicotine, and, you know, the vaping and all that to 21. That might help out school districts. You know, kids, they're resourceful. On the good side, here's a good side. For the 2021 fiscal year, our estimated balance at the state level is 1.7% higher. So the new State Department of Revenue data indicates that the actual tax collections for the previous fiscal year, which ended June 30th, were higher than the preliminary estimates by 11.6%. So that means that we're bringing into the fund an estimated $967 million. So it'd be an estimated $1.73 billion. You think the money's got, we've got all that money in the state. However, there is a state statute that says half of any excess of general fund tax collections must be deposited into our rainy day fund. So that's why this projected $1.73 billion is a rainy day fund. Here I'm done.
Well, it'd be nice if they'd.
Well, I'd like to end up on a positive note. Wisconsin's got money.
Yeah, it'd be nice if they'd fund some of their mandates.
Yes, that would be nice if they'd fund some of the mandates. You are right.
Otherwise, it falls on the local taxpayers. Any questions or comments for Pat? Okay, we'll move on.
Yes, Dave. Okay. All right, board CISA report, Mick.
Well, I'm not quite as lengthy, but I think everybody gets the email. You guys all get an email from them. So you kind of have an idea of what's going on from month to month. There's a statement out there by John Ashley, who is the president of the WASB. And it's, you know, since board meetings have gotten kind of chaotic in some areas, there's this, he's got a nice little letter out on board civility, keeping your board meeting civil. So it's out there if anybody wants to read it. I haven't read it. I don't know, I just don't think we have any issue here. But then we also are looking to replace Mr. Dickert, who is retiring the end of next, June 30th. We looked at two different companies. We did decide to go with the WASB to help us find a replacement. And Patty Dickman's working for them now. She just retired from the Southern Door Administrator. So she's, I was surprised to see her walk in. So they're going to help us with that. And with their timeline, we'll start hopefully have somebody on board by January so they can, you know, get involved and jump and show them ropes. Also, I wanted to talk to Nick when he's got some time to find out what he would like to see in a new CISA seven administrator. So you've got a little couple of minutes, you know.
Their days.
Little chat, you know, if you're looking for someone. I think we might have a couple of in-house candidates.
Okay. Questions or comments for Mick? All right, citizens' delegation to be heard. Looks like we have one person written, Chris Schley. Would you like to speak?
Good evening. Thank you for having me. It's public knowledge that the schools have received federal and state COVID funding. Algo has noted they received about a million dollars in funding after the third wave. It's understood that Algo only receives this funding within-person student learning. Are there any other stipulations or factors that need to be met? Like the amount of testing performed as a district now tests the children on site with parental permission? What other items are we purchasing with this money? We know that the air purifiers are being tested. We have a timeline as to when they're going to be up and running at full capacity. There was mention of mental health services as well. What's the game plan moving forward with that? What is the plan to use the rest of the money that we haven't used so far? As far as special meeting lines speak, we'd like to see more time given when there are more people attending. The 20 minutes for 10 people really wasn't enough time for everybody to be heard. A few parents shared some ideas and had some really good questions. However, seeing as we aren't given a Q and A session and we don't receive answers, what are the thoughts about getting a roundtable discussion with board members and community members? Give more of a chance for questions and answers. We're the advocate for our children. So we'd like to be heard in big decisions. It should really be a group effort. Thank you.
Thank you. Student representative.
Hi.
You're here. Julia.
Okay, so I'll first talk about sports. Football has four wins and a total of one loss. And then their next game will be this Thursday, September 30th, against Lena, at Lena. Volleyball has four wins and 11 losses. That's including invites. The next game is on Tuesday, September 28th, against Gibraltar, at Gibraltar. Cross-country had their, had a meet last Thursday in Mishikot. And then the next one will not be until October 14th, which is a Thursday, and that's conference. And then soccer has a total of two wins. I don't really know the losses because they don't really tell me. They just said that they suck. And then they don't have a lot of, or they don't have games coming up because a lot of their members have been put on quarantine. But I think some of them are back now. Now onto clubs. The only club that we have right now is One Act. They're performing The Whispers by Kendra Thomas. That's about a girl named Katie. And she's struggling with the loss of her dad in the army and goes to this spot in the woods and to help comfort her. But with Katie's mom, but Katie's mom wants her to move to Texas and they won't be coming, and she won't be able to come back to the spot. And she has to change schools and find new friends. Her current friend Jamie is upset that she didn't tell her that she was leaving and she was going to leave without saying goodbye. Jamie is hurt by that and starts having a deep conversation with Katie. And then these whispers come out of nowhere in the woods that relate to her with how she's coping with the loss of her dad. And then the district competition is going to be Wednesday, October 13. Homecoming now, because that's vague now, because that's coming up. The theme for this year is movie genres. The seniors have horror, juniors have western, sophomores have mystery, and then freshmen have sports comedy. The dress-up days are Monday, construction worker, Tuesday, theme day, Wednesday, class color, Thursday, candle day, and then Friday, black and yellow day, of course. And then there are a total of nine senior couples plus junior, sophomore, and freshman couples. The reason why we have nine senior couples is because we didn't have a prom last year. So in order to make it up or opening it up to it being as a homecoming and a prom. The court will be taking pictures at Bayview Walking Trail, which is right next to Sunny's. And then we'll be eating at Sunny's after the pictures are taken. And then this is just other stuff. Logan Dorr and Mia Mako are doing a blood drive with the American Red Cross on October 20th. Students must be 16 years old or older in order to donate. And the blood drive will be 9:00 AM to 11:00 PM. On Wednesday, September 22nd, Mr. Nelson, Mr. Cruz, and Ms. Perler brought the freshman class to Potomone State Park to do some hiking and other activities related to the coursework. They all enjoyed the scenery and getting to be outdoors, which I'm a little jealous that they weren't able to do. Mr. Cruz, his social studies seminar classes are playing YOLO once again after a year due to COVID. YOLO is a life simulation game that students play on the last day of the week that has students creating an economy, managing money, creating of government, and managing resources. Each student pays bills, eats a diet, manages debt, votes on government and laws, and takes care of the environment. The things learned about in class map directly onto the game so students get to put their knowledge into practice. And that is it.
Thank you. Sounds good. Lot going on. Yeah, thank you. I don't have any particular announcements, so go on to administrative reports.
Three Friday numbers, obviously a major point for every school district. This year, we have 736 as of right now. I say that because that'll depend on other school districts making sure that their records are in fact accurate and that they will do right up until the very last second. So.
Is that because of open enrollment?
Yeah, where that impacts us is open enrollment. So this year, we have 364 students, early childhood through sixth grade, 316 at the middle school high school, 56 open enrolled in. That's the highest we've ever had. And then right now, 79 open enrolled out. That number basically stays the same year in, year out just because families live on, you know, school district boundaries. Parents work in other communities. It's easier for them. Of the 79 kids that are open enrolled out, I would say maybe a dozen of them are for reasons that aren't logistical. So that open enrollment outnumber doesn't move around much. I think the bigger one for us is obviously open enrollment in. Because you can do the math. When we used to have zero, now we have 56. So that's a big monumental thing for us. So that's why we need to pay attention.
If I remember correctly, the outs, a lot of those outs were never in the district to begin with, right? So either they moved in from a different district and decided to finish off where they came from.
Yep.
Right? Okay.
And a lot of it is families that live in our district and work in neighboring communities and, you know, their childcare and what have you. It's just easier for them. So I can't, you know, blame it on them.
Okay, questions or comments for Nick? Okay, moving on. Elementary principals' report, Katie.
All right, we are off to a really great start at the elementary school. I just wanted to kind of mention a few bright spots as we've started this little bit of August and September here. First of all, Marie has been, her leadership in elementary special ed has been amazing. We've worked through a bunch of scheduling. We've worked through the new special ed staff, absences, new students. So it's just been really great to have her leadership in that area this year and am looking forward to the rest of the school year. Along with Marie, Carrie has spent a lot of time, our nurse Carrie has spent a lot of time in our building. And she has been running around like crazy, kind of just managing everything on the COVID front for us in addition to injuries, other illnesses. She's just been fantastic. Shelley and Jamie in the office. The phones have been ringing off the hook. They're always answering with smiles on their faces. Hopefully, that comes through in their voices as well. But they've been instrumental in the successful start of our school year. Nick shared a little bit from a district level, but we have about 35 new students at the elementary specifically. That's not including all of the new 4K students that obviously are new every year. But that is probably the biggest number of new students that we've had in a really long time. So that's a huge positive with that. I would say about a third of them are receiving special education services. We have a bunch that are English language learners. So just a variety of needs, but definitely a higher number than we've seen in a while. Our teachers and our PLCs, they have been working flawlessly for the most part. I can't say enough about how they've been collaborating around kind of transitioning back to some things that we had been doing pre-COVID and kind of dealing with the grayness, I guess we'll call it, the gray area of all of the things that are going on this year. So they've really been stepping up, helping each other out, kind of just really been giving what the students, giving the students what they need, just really working to rebuild a lot of those relationships and things like that. So that's been really positive to see. We've had picture day. We've survived the August and September bees that usually come about the playground this time of year. So we're past that and we're definitely moving in a really great direction. So thank you to everyone who's made that a positive start. Real quickly, I wanted to share out some information. And I know Katie Horn is going to do the same for the middle and high school. But we are just about to start up again with Tanya from Bellin Health, providing mental health services to our students on site. It's always a little bit tricky starting the new school year because any students that do not continue receiving services over the summer at the clinic, they have to be re-refered. So we're working through that. We had only two students at the elementary school that continued throughout the summer. So the rest, between Angie and Haley, we're just trying to get them back so that we can get them scheduled with Tanya. So that's exciting. We also started Breakfast Club back up again at the elementary school. That's for students in grades K through six. We currently have 17 students that are participating in that. And that's a really great program for students who just have a variety of needs. Sometimes they just need a different start to their day, maybe some basic hygiene stuff. But it's just a really good social connection time for them, led by Haley Vasky and Angie Kijersky. And we had not had the opportunity to start that until very late last year. So we're happy to be starting that up now. And then lastly, a couple of weeks ago, our third graders participated in a beach cleanup. So it was a community effort with some city crews, friends of Crescent Beach. The students were kind of charged with picking up the smaller debris items. And Mrs. Lebat, one of the third grade teachers, shared that overall between third grade and eighth grade, participated in that as well. They picked up 50 pounds of debris. Some of that was sand, so. So take that with a grain of salt, but still a pretty astounding amount. And that was part of the, I had to write this down, part of the Alliance for the Great Lakes September Adopt a Beach Day of Action. So us, along with thousands of other volunteers around the five Great Lakes, participated in that. So I guess we're off to a really great start.
Yeah.
How's the librarian coming?
Wonderful. It's been very wonderful. I'm happy to also report that the fifth and sixth grade students, who typically had not been on the library schedule in any capacity, she reached out to them right away, the teachers, and they already have something in the works. So she's been phenomenal.
Great. Excellent. Any other comments or questions for Katie? All right, hearing none, we will continue. Middle school, high school principals' report and Pathfinder update. Katie.
Julia did a great job with homecoming. I'll just add a few couple of things in there. We will have our pep rally on Friday. The dance is Saturday from 8:00 to midnight. And then we will again be having the parade on Friday, leading at long-term care. I know it's an exciting thing for the community every year. So I just wanted to mention that that will be back and happening again this year.
What time?
4:30.
4:30.
4:30, yep.
Okay.
Our Bellin Mental Health professional numbers up here are a little bit larger. We had six continue in the summer. We have four new referrals already put in just for the month of September. And I sent two more with students today. So we are up to 12. And if we're looking at scheduling with Tanya, she has three spots per week for building. So I just thinking of, you know, the mental health of our students and with one therapist that has three spots per week. With 12 kids, they're getting seen at MAPS once per month, which for most of the kids seeing Tanya doesn't even put a dent in, you know, some of their needs and some of the things that they're not aware of. So when we're looking at therapy for our students, you know, I would like to think about hopefully trying to maybe get either another day or another therapist in to help out with some of our needs. I've definitely seen this year more than in other years, kids in my office just longing for help of some sort. And it's kids that I've never, I have my frequent flyers, but it's kids that I've never had in my office before. Lunch being a big trigger for a lot of students. Now that we're back, when we've been in the cafeteria last year, they were in their pods in their rooms eating. And now that kids are back in my cafeteria, some kids just can't handle it. So I've got some of our highest performing students that are eating by themselves in my office just to get away from the noise because their anxiety takes over during lunch. So I would like to, you know, maybe look into trying to get, you know, another day of therapy or another therapist just to help out our kiddos. I mean, I know at the elementary, there's two that continued over summer, but I know of four that have already been putting in referrals out there as well. So as those numbers continue to climb, I would love to try and get some more help for those kiddos.
Have you talked with Bellin at all? Have you had that discussion? Yeah, so I mean.
There's, there's a lot of barriers. And it's, and I was going to, I'm going to report on that too. So I brought up mental health. But people think it's just a very easy, easy to get more therapists, but one, there's not enough therapists available. And two, we're a rural community. So it takes somebody to want to be working in Algo or travel to make that possible. We've even, because funding, you know, don't tell me there's a funding problem because there's not. We've never had a funding problem for Algo. We've been very fortunate. So we'll find a way. We have great partnerships, great grant opportunities. But even providing funding and saying, let's make vouchers for students, there are still obstacles whether they're on healthcare insurance or not and then what healthcare company will cover them, even if you pay for them. And then that's not available for all students. So this is probably an ongoing conversation for the last four years. I'll give three, which is, I'll talk about my report on some other ways that we are being creative. And we know that mental health, not everybody needs a therapist. We know that. That's like a brain surgeon. That's like expert care. And there are many students, but we do have quite a few students that need that expert care that only a therapist, we feel, can provide. And then there's other things that we will do that I'll talk about that are addressing that issue for students that do have anxiety or worries or stresses that might not need therapy. But we have to think differently as a community and come together with that, so.
Well, and that was our resolution that we submitted in terms of, you know, give the schools a category so that we can.
Definitely not stopping the fight with therapists, but it's sort of response of realities of open access.
Of lack of staff available. Yeah, yeah.
The last thing for middle school, high school is Camp U. So our eighth grade students never got to go to Camp U in Ohio. Their sixth grade year due to COVID. And they had fundraisers and some of them had paid off all of their Camp U dues and they never got to go. So they are going to have the opportunity to go at the end of October. I think it's, it's the last one, it's the 27th or 29th. So the kids are pretty excited. We just told them like two weeks ago, I think, that they get to go. So I know that Katie had called and said that Camp U, I think last year already have reserved dates in case they could go. So we have some chaperones already picked out and the kids are getting in really excited. So we have a party for them since they don't get to actually go in sixth grade.
Yeah, the kids at so many grade levels miss so much, you know. It's nice if we can give them back, so that's great.
And then my Pathfinder report, last week,[1745.84] And then my Pathfinder report, last week they went to the Botanical Gardens to see the recycled art sculptures that are there right now. Which was a really cool experience for a lot of them. I think at the beginning they were like, what are, just kind of look at art. And when they actually got to look and like read at what everything was about, it's all recycled things that people have in the ocean. This trash that they made into this really awesome art. So the kids are pretty excited about that. And then they're going to be starting college tours next week. We have UWGD lined up for next Thursday. So the kids will get to experience that. And then the last thing is, I don't know if I'm talking about this or not, but Miss G has them doing a new requirement before they graduate. Called Lead Your Legacy Project. So each one of them gets to pick something to leave their mark on Pathfinder. Whether it's creating a class for kids to take as an elective or just something for them to be remembered by. So they have to decide on what their project's going to be. And then they have to present it to myself. And I usually bring like Casey along with me, and I know they presented to Nick as well, about their projects. They have to have like a budget. They have to have mentors. They have to have community mentors for their project. So the ones that presented to myself and Nick so far want to do a picnic table because outside at the back of Pathfinder there's just this concrete space. But they like to go work, but there's no seating. So they put a budget together to see, I know they talked to Nick about prices of wood. And they were gonna talk to Mr. Abel about, you know, that versus maybe going to Menards for prices of wood. And they picked a couple of their mentors and presented the project, which was really, really awesome to see. So that's the first one that's in the works.
What a great idea. Lead your legacy. Yeah, I like that.
That's all I got.
I have a question on the mental health. And I know that if, if you yourself suffer, have mental health issues, or if you are around someone that has mental health issues, nobody else really understands how devastating that can be. My question is, the little clemic girl last year, Amanda Blotted Clemic, her daughter had, did those sensory rooms. Are those being utilized yet?
No, she had a successor. So part of student-led projects in the district is that they'll have like a leader or two. And so that was two years ago that she was doing that. She was a senior. And during their senior year, they kind of bring somebody, an undergrad along. And that person was taking that project on and then ended up moving. And then we had COVID and you can fill the gap from there. So we don't currently have a student that can, that is interested that we know of yet, not saying that it's not gonna happen. But the spaces are still there. The community members that were involved in that project are still engaged. It's just a matter of.
I mean, she poured her heart and soul into that. And if you don't have the right person in line to succeed that, it's hard.
And knowing Alana, like she would probably come back and build the capacity up of a student that'd be interested. And I, there are some students I saw in Ms. Horn's office today, actually, that I think would be incredible if given the opportunity and the invitation that have talked about some of the things that they're dealing with. So. Or it could be an ABA student that wants to take on a project like that as well. So that's not to say no, it's just not now, not yet.
I, I would say though, that that's like the segue into a broader conversation that I think is not just in Algoma, but it's everywhere. It's.
Oh.
The state on one hand basically ties the hands of school districts, right, by not even allowing us to have an expenditure for mental health. While on one hand, they tell us that we should be doing all this about mental health. The other part is, what even classifies, right, to the point of our resolution? The most successful programs in this district related to mental health have not been partnered with a therapist, right? It's the social connection between kids and adults and trust, right? So I know that on a consortium-wide level with all the school districts, that we are having that conversation about how we can develop a suite of services that school districts can buy into or have access to so that we can fill the needs in our local school districts. Because the reality of getting a licensed therapist is about as good as finding a needle in a haystack, okay? Healthcare will tell you the exact same thing. There are none available. Yet, we have this mental health crisis that everybody thinks that we should have this solid handle on because we have a school psychologist. But the school psychologist really does nothing related to mental health because they are mandated to do all the assessment and training related to special education, right? Same thing with guidance counselors, so on and so forth. They don't even do any of that work, right? So I think there's a much broader conversation that has to happen. And I agree with you that the programs like Alana setup, that's the stuff that we need to be looking at as a different approach to addressing mental health in our schools. Because, you know, what happens when a therapist leaves? So all these things that you have to consider, right, it's not just a broad brush approach that's going to solve all of our problems. I think it's a whole bunch of little tiny things that have proven to be successful. And I think you're well aware of many programs that address those issues in our school district that are wildly successful. That would be part of a suite of services for a school district to buy into. I know that there's tremendous support for that stuff. However, on a consortium level, how do you acquire those people? So it comes down to, there are just not enough people in those areas. So we're gonna have to think differently about how we address these concerns.
Would you like me to add to that now or just wait till my little more report?
Um, I think since we're in the conversation, go ahead. I mean, let's.
So a couple of things, and I'm just gonna mention, because, you know, what are we doing for mental health? Well, we have national recognition. So US News is gonna be doing a national thing about what Algoma School District is doing about mental health. And the reason I think our community doesn't always know is because we're not in your face about, now we have three mental health therapists onsite. Because remember, the mental health definition needs to be redefined everywhere. We're not downplaying that we have, we need for therapists, licensed therapists. We, we can't, I can't help somebody who is in, who needs a mental health therapist. That's something that we need to provide. And we're gonna fight all the gosh darn obstacles from a local healthcare level to the state level of how we even give funding for that. So they could give us five million dollars and say this is for mental health, but they're gonna define it by you need to have a mental health therapist and then we don't have access to mental health therapists. So Algoma does a really great job of thinking differently. And we know that there are so many people that have anxiety and worry and depression and trauma and adversity that they don't know how to overcome. And it doesn't matter how you bring them. They could come from a household of poverty or a most affluent household and whatever. We have mental health lore. We have parents and guardians that deal with mental health. It's everywhere. So to me, it's coming together as a community to, through our, through Live Algoma in the last seven years, I can prove that connections and relationships and building spaces of trust absolutely matter. And what we're getting recognized for across our region by funders who fund us, across our state who is listening to us and across our nation, who now wants to have a news thing about an eighty-year-old and a fourteen-year-old. Stories are vastly different, but both struggling with mental health and found a connection, right? We have a mobile resource center. Yes, it's to mobilize basically. But if you read the Life in Style magazine, it's also to have on, or virtual therapy, right, for mental health. We can maximize that. Maybe we don't have an onsite therapist, but could be provided in a different way. Well, guess what? The reality is that's gonna take a long time to have an MOU of the state of Wisconsin. So what are we doing in the meantime? We're developing something called the Hope Squad. We're training our high school students to train other students to be the eyes and ears of how to have a conversation with a peer and when to know that this is something serious and then what to do in response to that. So it's kind of like a first responder as a peer. We have mental health first training for our staff that we've been doing for the last three years. We have a mentorship program, a cross-age mentorship program from high school to elementary. And I have proof in the pudding that that works when our students are taking their savers test and they tell us that their social and emotional scores are increasing and why? Because they have a connection with somebody who cares about them, loves them, and is there for them. We have rooms, not the free room that you're referring to, which I hope comes to fruition. But if you go to any of our buildings, there are pocket rooms where, even in Katie Horn's office, it's a restroom. It's a room for them to be like, holy crap, I don't even know what's going on, but I need like some rest, some care, some whatever. Leave me a room. We're doing things like that. We have a wolf-in-after-school program. Yeah, it's not open to everybody. You're right. But guess what? They're identified through a test that the students themselves take that says SOS, I need help. We have, I mean, a plethora of people from universities, whether it's UW Madison or UW Green Bay, thinking differently, providing us with social work interns, anything that we can do to provide more care for our students. We have local officers that technically, yeah, we don't have a resource officer that we're paying. We have law enforcement officers who, on their own goodwill, are coming into our schools and building relationships with our kids. So that when they're in their uniforms and they're all in the community, they're looking like a safe person that they can come and talk to. I could go on forever about, I feel like what we're doing, we're trying to push the boundaries in Algoma. We're getting recognized for that. Do we have it all? Heck no. There's gotta be more that we have to do. The Wellness Center is another example. And that's just not for our youth. We have seniors who are isolated in their homes who are still struggling with mental health, who are now making connections and relationships with our youth. It's glorious when we can think that way. And we all have a part in solving the mental health problem in our community. And it's not gonna rely on a one FTE of a mental health therapist. That's just one slice of what we need to do. And furthermore, I'm just gonna say this, I'm on a soapbox, but I will, Nick's probably, I follow you so that I can look, but. I know that our, everybody's just totally divided. But people have heard me say, coming together and just making a unified decision, even though it wasn't everybody's, what they wanted, was something that I was so proud of our community to do because our youth are watching. And if you wanna talk about mental health, the biggest thing is when their parents fight at home, when their friends are fighting, when they're part of a fight, when everybody else is fighting. And we have to like keep modeling this. And we have to take shared accountability and action for things like mental health. It is all of our responsibility to think differently. Like Nick always says, ain't nobody gonna come help and fix and save us. Last time I checked, no one was thinking about Algoma and what Algoma has to do for our youth. So I'm just on a soapbox, but like, we gotta get out of our own way and think differently about what we're doing. And we're doing some really great things. And we just gotta support each other and keep bringing up work.
Yeah. Quick summary, mental health is a very complex issue. And the funding isn't really the issue. It's the accessibility. So. Yeah, we're, we keep striving to find new ways around, you know, that, so that we can meet the kids' needs. And it sounds like you guys are doing a great job. So thank you and keep it up.
I think I want to just ask a question. When the therapist does come in, I mean, how are these kids identified? Who, I mean, because I mean, I'm sure everybody'd like to, how are they identified? I mean, do we, do we say, hey, you know, or do they come to us?
It's a series of things. I mean, it could be parents, it could be youth. It's a test that they take at school. It's trauma at home or law enforcement gets involved. It could be social work. I mean, there's no one-way stream of identifying a student. Now, to get them access to therapy has to be their care team of decision. And that's an obstacle too. We, we could identify a student, the student identifies themselves, and the parent guardian would say no. We could get them access and they might have to wait for three months before they can see someone, whether it's here or offsite. Same with our adults. I mean, that's not, so what we're saying in the meantime, we gotta think differently about how to get some access and opportunity for their mental health and emotional needs.
Okay. So Katie, are you finished with your report? No, that's all right. It was a good discussion. And then you don't have to get into that one. It's your report. Moving on then, Business Managers Finance Bolton Report. Jason?
As you know, on October fifteenth, which is on Friday, we will get our funding numbers for this year. So we'll learn what funding is available to the school district on that Friday. So I'm proposing a finance committee meeting on October eighteen.
What day is that, Jason?
Monday.
So that'll be a Monday.
Okay.
So I'll turn it over, you know, once we get the numbers on Friday, I'll put it together and have it ready for Monday. If that works.
Yeah, I have no problem with that.
That works.
One.
Dave is the third person on that committee. So I guess let's just make sure that one o'clock would work for him. Works for you?
It works for me. Okay.
And then, so after the, we have our numbers that I guess, after the finance committee meeting, we have to have a budget hearing. So I'm proposing October twenty-fifth, Monday, that's supposed to be twenty twenty-one, at four forty-five, which would be right before the regular board meetings.
That is a full board function and a public one? Is that a problem for anyone?
Nope.
No? Okay. That sounds good.
Four forty-five.
Attached to Bolton is monthly ventures, the budget, uh, keep you going. Then on your, how your papers were filled, seven, eight, nine seconds. And all yes.
Okay. Questions or comments for Jason? Okay. Hearing none, we'll keep moving. Special Ed Report. Marie?
Yeah, you may have remembered, or really can't recall, you may recall that I was talking about our vacancy for our occupational therapists through our contract for BEA. We're still kind of waiting for them to find somebody. They're actually hiring someone on their end to work in a clinic setting for them and then help us here, we can help each other out. But starting the school year off, you know, occupational therapist, therapist was kind of giving us a little bit of a stressor. So I had reached out to area school districts to see if anyone had an occupational therapist that worked part-time that would be willing to live for us until we could fill that vacancy. Hannah Perlin from Kiwanis graciously offered to help us out one day a week in the district so she could work a full day supporting students and then work from home for a day to do all the paperwork. So she could maximize her time with students. So far, she just is ready to hit the ball rolling. She's been great. Other than that, I left a little fact sheet for you for what our special education numbers look like right now. It's just really informational for you. The numbers wise, from a home unit, ten out of, at elementary school alone, we have sixty-eight students that are identified as special education students, which is about eighteen percent of our population at the elementary school. Five are currently under the process of referral to be evaluated for special education. If they want to qualify, that would bring our percentage up to twenty percent, which is kind of a, an alarming number, which is no secret. So when it's in places like that, it is a high number. Like Katie Surry said, eight of those are new transferring in this school district. At least five of the students require signature one-to-one support for their IEPs. And that's divided by our five special education teachers and nine special ed professionals. I then put a grade breakdown and a primary disability breakdown. Katie also had filled in some of the information for middle school, high school on the back. And then I just put what the caseload looks like for the special education teachers, as well as speech and language, physical therapy, occupational therapy. And I've been hard of hearing to have a contract for this. One of the reasons I put this together too was just so you could see for speech and language, fifty-six. Ashley is caseload. She does have support from the cultural guard right now. Oh, the cultural guard is also a special education teacher with an additional caseload student. So looking at possibly getting additional speech and language support might be some approach that we would have to take just because that is a very large caseload for one person. I also met with an individual named Claudia, she's great, from MJ Care, which is our school billing, our Medicaid billing representative. billing, our Medicaid billing representative. I put a breakdown of our reimbursement cost for you of what we had received, well, I'm just wondering, Jason, we don't receive any from the state, but from last year, what our reimbursement amount was, we attended here, and what attended here is the quality of information sheets. But when our care professionals are supporting students in the classroom, if they qualify for Medicaid reimbursement, for things like eating, routine personal hygiene, dressing, toileting, transferring from room to room, taking them to the restroom, supervision in the classroom, we're queuing to pay attention, which is a good percentage of our students. Last year, we had done for eight students, this year, we are up to 18 students that we found that will qualify for Medicaid reimbursement. So that will be, well, in addition to that, she also showed us how to build for that online versus funding through the paper trail, which will be a lot more efficient, and it'll probably be a greater amount that we will be receiving back.
Excellent work. I mean, we have to try and get funding any way we can, given the very poor reimbursement that our state and federal have
The great need.
Have, due for not only our school district, but many, you know, any school district, the percentages, what is the percentage right now? What is the percentage, Jason, of what we get back for?
Special ed.
Special ed.
Uh, you're probably right around 11.
It's supposed to be 66.
Yeah. Yeah, 11 to 12% of our costs are reimbursed, and you just heard, 20% of
Just elementary students.
The elementary students alone are special ed. So, yeah, it's ridiculous. And then they have their 1.7 billion rainy day fund.
Well, it's raining.
And they promise, yeah, we've been telling them it's raining, and, yeah, they give us these mandates, but thank you, yeah, this will always help. Any other comments or questions for Marie?
More like a torrential downpour.
The torrential downpour?
Yeah.
All right. Back to you, Teal, the Velgoma monthly.
The only thing I'm gonna add aside from the mental health saga I was on is, you know, during COVID last year, we did do a whole lot of tours, and people always want to come and see what we have offered, so just this last one. We have a representative from the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation, which is a supporting foundation of our school, and then on Friday, we have a representative from US Venture who's a big funder that sends money to the Greater Green Bay Community Foundation. It's not the one you love, Katie, but a new person who works there, and I just made, mentioned that because they always hear about our opportunities, and they just want to take a tour and see all the great stuff that's happening, and they're huge advocates for us, so, which was what I was gonna say, with mental health, they're definitely listening, watching, advocating in what we need, so that's great to have them in our back corner. That's it. Oh, and the life and style magazine, I put some extra copies.
Yep, thank you.
But we tried to really focus on the mobile resource center so that people knew of the different ways we can utilize it. It will be on its first field trip Thursday, so we'll get to use the hotspot in the Chromebooks and that sort of thing, so, excited.
Yeah, great. Questions for you, Teal? Comments? Okay, we'll keep moving. Elgoma Venture Academy update.
Well, let the gates open. We have lots of, we have a growing list of kids on the waitlist, so we are currently at 23. We will not accept new students until semester, because we have to have staffing for it. At 23, we're actually over what our governance board and what the contract had, so we are looking to hire a one FTE right now. A little bit of that is failing forward. We had set our staffing ratios based on a traditional setting, with not really considering that we have 7 through 12, so it's grade levels, they're all different, age development-wise, they're all different, their needs are all different, and it's a charter pathway that project-based and community-based learning, so it's like individualized learning plans for every single student. So looking at the budget, and you guys can approve that later, but that's something that the Elgoma Venture Academy Governance Board is presenting to you, they have enough in their budget to cover additional one FTE, and then at semester, depending on how many students we have on our waitlist that will be accepted, we will have to look at that again. So it's a great problem to have, and see that warrior over here with her, she's also getting her master's right now, but, so fun stuff. I will say that with our Headrush program, there's a lot that we're learning about, and we have, this Friday, we're gonna be sending out our first kind of parent book at what their students are doing, if they haven't already reached out to us or vice versa. And looking at that with Abby this last week, it was really kind of cool, because they get to see all the projects that they have, and they're uploading evidence, and we have 7 through 12 that are learning, like, what learning targets are, and these are some things that our students in the traditional setting wouldn't have an opportunity to really know, like, what necessarily that they're learning to attach it, not that they don't know what they're learning, but they're physically manipulating the most state standards and attaching it to their product, projects. So it's really cool to see about a month in where our students are now as to where they were in the first two weeks of school. I just see a lot of advocacy, a lot of accountability towards themselves and the learner. So, I don't know, that's just, quick little report up on that. And then finally, another thing that we, uh, bring to approve is the contract. We thought it was all said and done, but there was literally about four words we had to remove, so we got to go through this regular row again, so I apologize, but the state actually caught their error on their part, so they saved, approved our contract, and then came back and said, oh, by the way, these four words have to be opened in, we can fill in four words, six, so. So it's students who reside in the Elgoma School District boundaries, what that means, we have to reopen that. So public charter schools have to have an enrollment cap. Our enrollment cap is 40. If during open enrollment, we would have 41 applications, we would have to go to a public lottery. Next year, our enrollment increases, we'll be at 60. Again, we can set kind of like precedence, and we had said that students who reside in the Elgoma School District or returning students and/or siblings could have precedence in that public lottery, if you would have to go, the state's like, and said, you can have all of that, except to not give the rest of these students to the Elgoma School District boundaries. So we had to. And then we kinda also, since we had the opportunity to open the contract up again, we added some more clear language about the semester when students get enrolled, once they're on the waitlist, and we just put, at the start of semester, so. All things great when you start something new.
Abby, do you want to put any two cents worth in?
I feel like that was a pretty good synopsis, but another thing that's been really successful is the field excursions that we've been able to go on and getting students out of school and into the community in various capacities, so that's definitely a bright spot from the happenings at ABA, so.
And the parent feedback, we talked about that today in our mentorment TV, and just, you know, I think change is definitely hard for anybody, and there's a lot of buzz and rumors about what the Elgoma Venture Academy was, even the difference between Pathfinder Academy and Venture Academy. I think we've tried to do our best in clarifying that, that Pathfinder Academy is not a public charter, meaning not anybody can apply to that, that's a decision based internally with the care team of the student. And Venture Academy is a public charter, anybody can apply, and it's for any and all students that, you know, want project-based and community-based learning. But the, the, I don't know, we just had a parent meeting today, and it was just fun to just have good conversations about, of just an additional pathway of learning for students that that would look best for. And I truthfully think it's another strategy for mental health. I see, and Abby, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but just being as general as I can, I would say we have identified probably 50% of our ABA population, where either the student or the parent is stressing that they have had a lot of anxiety or social disconnection in the traditional setting, and their growth in this pathway has been exceptional. So, again, is it mental health definition? No, but is it helping some of our students with their emotional and social wellbeing? Yes. So, I'm complete.
Okay, let's get questions. Okay, we'll move on to committee reports. We had two committee meetings, charter school.
Okay, so the charter school met a week ago today, and as Teal explained to you, we worked to put the word "new" into, as an identifier for applicants to the Venture Academy, understanding what the lottery will mean as well. The other thing we talked about was a need for boardroom technology that would service both the Venture Academy, this organization, and probably the school at large. We need to have some more bids so we can get a firmer number on what we really need and what's important to do, and other variables or possibilities in that technology. So that's tabled until we get more information. And we also are recommending to the board to approve an additional 1.0 FTE for the academy. So those are the three things we talked about. Any questions?
One thing from that meeting that I was sort of surprised about was the large number of middle school kids in the charter school.
Which is awesome, because that's the base for it.
Yeah.
Right?
It's typically eighth grade, we have nine and 10, four, five.
So you've done a really good job explaining to parents and to students what the possibilities are and what that kind of process involves, so it's
Giving them an alternative.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So thank you for doing that.
Okay, then we had a public relations marketing meeting.
Yes, we did. We viewed the virtual presentation from Jason West, who is working on our website. Gorgeous, wonderful. He gave us two perspectives we could look at, and he kind of melded some of them together. I think once you look at it, it's, you're gonna be very surprised, it's perfect. So.
It's nice to hear some enthusiasm about our webpage for a while, because it has needed work for a long time.
It will be way better.
Yeah, it's very vibrant, very interesting.
Much more user-friendly as well.
Right.
That's wonderful.
And, you know, you can click on it and have it a different language.
Really?
Yeah.
That's nice, too.
Then we also talked about this, like, shore, and we talked about other marketing projects. I brought up Friendly Elgoma, and I know we have a ad in there, but I would hope that we would put it where it says relocating to Elgoma, and we need to push what we have here. And then we also talked about the Wolf Review publication, and I see adding the Wolf Review to the utility bills.
Okay, so explain, explain that a little bit to me.
New residents.
Yeah, new residents would get
They get a copy of what we're doing in this school district. It's just a means to get into that.
Okay.
For new, for new people.
For new people, I mean, I think it's
It would certainly give them an idea.
Right, any way, any possibilities of getting, this, you know, there are so many people that live in this district that do not know what we're doing.
From a community development committee standpoint at the city, and I just pointed to Jen, because she's also on that committee, they just feel that regardless of if they have youth or not, they're still taxpayers, and if they come to move here, they should know what's going on, so
Right.
Wolf Review is a good snapshot of some of the things that we offer.
Mm-hmm. Yeah. And Friendly Elgoma is, is it the Chamber publication?
That's the Chamber publication.
Right, so that would be one that's always available, that's free at many sites, so it would
And, you know, people go in the Chamber building and pick it up, and, and we have had people who have said, oh, this is a community I'd like to live in.
Yeah.
I mean, they're doing such wonderful things, so.
Ann, is there a date that this new website's gonna be up in?
Yes, October some
We hope.
Time, he's working on October.
No, what do you think? Teal?
Next time we meet, we'll get more of a final version.
We're not there yet.
Yeah, we're not there. There's a lot of things to flesh out, yeah.
We're just wondering.
Yeah.
When he gets it all
Actually, I could give you a timeline.
I mean, are we looking at three months, one month?
What did, what did he say?
Six months.
Oh, so, design revisions till October 6th, then, then he'll come back between the 6th and the 13th to finish up templates, remember, we still have to finalize a sub, the child pages, and then the parent grandparent now, get all the technology terms.
Yeah.
But then it's our staff's responsibility to make sure that they are updating the information, the pictures, whatever, that has to be sent to him. So we're looking at a go-live potentially the first week of November.
That was cool.
Well, that's actually
And then you have to decide the second process, because of how are we going to
Unveil it.
Like, all the things that are, like, more blog, their newsletters, who's gonna update that, some of those are not stated information, so we have to decide that, so that might be another phase.
Yeah, the logistics, it's only gonna work if we keep it updated, and so the people, so people have to be identified.
And it's only useful if it's updated, otherwise, you're not gonna go back to it, so.
Right, and we have to identify people that actually have time to do it and have the ability to do it, so that we're not
And the responsibility.
Yeah, the first time somebody goes and looks at a website and they can't find what they're looking for, they're not gonna go back, and so
Which is sort of the way it is now.
Yeah, this gentleman really has put a lot of work into it, and
I'm very anxious to see it.
Okay, well, what needs to be done?
Yeah. Okay, other specific items for discussion? We are just with our last reading of the policy, public participation at board meetings, and we had just, the only change that we had put was putting in formerly the three-minute limit on parking. Yeah, it's on the back of it.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's the only change. Okay.
Okay.
Um, moving on to action items. I need a motion to approve the regular board meeting minutes of August 23rd, 2021, the charter school committee meeting minutes of September 20th, 2021, the special school board meeting minutes of September 21st, 2021, and public relations marketing committee meeting minutes of September 22nd, 2021.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Ann. Questions or discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to accept the bills that in our packet, as well as the additional ones presented to us tonight.
So moved.
Second.
And motion made by Pat, seconded by Mick. Questions or discussion on those? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve the annual academic and career planning plan.
I so moved.
I'll second.
Motion made by Jennifer, seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that?
Yeah, is this the one, is this the, I gotta ask, does our guidance counselor meet with, is that, this is, and she meets with the students, right? Okay. That's still going, that's still going strong, so, okay, wonderful. Okay.
Any further comments? I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I know, I need a motion to approve the revised policy, P00167.3, public participation at board meetings.
I'll move.
Motion made by Ann?
I'll second.
Seconded by Joanne. Questions or discussion on that?
Um, yeah, I just, just so that people are aware of what it says, the portion of the meeting during which the participation of the public is invited shall be limited to three minutes per individual or 20 total minutes on shall be limited to three minutes per individual or 20 total minutes unless extended by a vote of the board. So, you do have that option, like we did at the last meeting, say, hey, can we extend this out a little bit? You know, and I, three minutes doesn't seem like a lot, but when you're up there talking, three minutes can be a very long time. Three minutes can be a very long time. So, as long as we have that, that little caveat in there that we can extend it if we need to. Okay.
Any other comments? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve an additional 1.0 FTE for Algo Ma Venture Academy.
I so move.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Jennifer. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I need a motion to approve Algo Ma Venture Academy's contract amendments for Section 3.10. D and Section 3.10. F.
I'll move.
Motion made by Joanne, seconded by Mick. Questions or discussion on that? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Any requests for future agenda items? We had discussed in our special board meeting that we will be putting on a review of our COVID mitigation strategies, see how our change works. So, we'll have that on the agenda, just as a review item, though. It will not necessarily be an action item to, to change anything. Any other agenda items that come to mind? Okay. Then I will ask for a motion to go into executive session under Wisconsin Statutes 19.85, subsections 1, C, E, F, and I, for the purpose of personnel matters, hires, staff, and resignations.
So move.
I'll second.
Motion made by Pat, seconded by Joanne. This is a roll call vote. Dave? Jennifer?
Yes.
Joanne, Nick?
Yep.
Yes.
Yep.
Pat? I also say yes. Thank you for joining us.
Thanks for coming.